Welcome to the Ayinella Chamber. Madam Clerk, will you please?
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Ciomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zachem.
Here.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
(laughing).
We have a quorum.
I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would ask all councilors and guests to please rise. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as Counselor Baker leads us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. And now, I'd like to introduce Counselor Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have the pleasure to introduce Father John Curry. Father Curry is currently the pastor of Dorchester Tribe Parishes, which consists of St. Teresa's of Calcutta, St. Peter's and Holy Family, and St. Patrick's in Roxbury. Originally from St. Mark's Dorchester, the 10th of a family of 12. Good job, Father.
Thank you.
Well, maybe I should say that to your parents. He's a graduate of St. Mark's Elementary School and Boston Latin Academy and was ordained in 1997. Prior to coming to Dorchester, Father John Curry served the Catholic Weymouth Collaborative until 2016. He very much enjoys collaborating with the city and building a bright future for our children in a warm, welcoming, nurturing community for all its people. Father John Curry.
Thank you, Counselor Baker, for your invitation to be here today, and thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to be with you and to pray with you and those you serve. Before we enter the chambers, I met some good folks from Children's Hospitals, so I want to offer a very special word to them of my prayers for your mission and what you do to serve the children and their families, and may God bless you with all the resources you need today and every day. Let us pray. God of all people in all nations, as the members of the council and their staffs convene today on behalf of the people of our city, who have entrusted them with the solemn duty of leading our city with vision, wisdom, and courage, we pray that any differences or disagreements will not be obstacles to progress, but rather will be opportunities to seek common ground in mutual understanding. We pray that no one person will claim to have all the answers, but rather the council will value and depend upon the collective knowledge and experience it possesses. And Lord, we pray that no interest will take greater priority than the priority that you have given us to care and provide for the hungry, the homeless, the frightened, the lonely, the suffering, the disenfranchised, the innocent, the young, and the elderly. In asking your guidance to lead us along this way, we ask your blessing upon the mayor and everyone who works with the council. May all of them be in solidarity for the sake of our city and its people today and well into the future, so that the city of Boston will grow ever more to be a place of welcome, safety, opportunity, equality, justice, respect, and community for your people. Hear our prayer as we call out to you with hope and trust in your holy name, now and forever, as together we say, "Amen."
Thank you for that loving message, Father. Counselor Baker?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Father. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite up Juan Lopez from Central Staff to make a presentation. Hi, Juan. Thanks, Juan.
Okay, so I'll wear the hat of the city crier today for the Central Staff. And here ye. It's a great honor to do this, councilor, because other than being a public servant for many decades, the other institution that has been part of my life since I first came as a nine-year-old, and the first hospital that my mother took me to was Children's Hospital. And of course, my children, five of them, and seven granddaughters are all patients of Children's Hospital, so there's many other ties. So on behalf of the council president, Andrea Campbell, council vice president, all the councilors, we're going to read this proclamation. The high side is not this. Whereas Boston Children's Hospital has for the fifth year in a row been named the number one pediatric hospital in the country by U.S. News and World Report for the quality of its clinical care. And whereas this distinction is based on a rigorous analysis of key clinical data from nearly 200 medical centers, and whereas the honor is also based on surveys of over 11,000 pediatric specialists who are asked where they would send the sickest children in their specialty. And whereas Boston Children has ranked in the top four hospitals in all 10 specialties and best overall. And whereas, in addition to breaking boundaries, pioneering resolutions, and making the impossible possible for children from all over the world, Boston Children's Hospital has, for the past 150 years, also served as a community hospital for the children of Boston. And whereas, in its role as a community hospital for the children of Boston, Boston Children's Hospital has been a valued partner with the Boston Public Schools, Boston Public Health Commission, Boston Centers for Youth and Families, and Boston's network of community health centers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council in its meeting assembled does hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 22, 2018, to be Boston Children's Hospital Day in the city of Boston. On behalf of the president here, I'd like to call Sandra Fenwick to the podium.
I'm right here.
Oh, she's right. You're ahead of me.
I'm ahead of you.
And, well, she's the head, the one of the ladies that represents our city in such an amazing way. I mean, I could say so many things, and I'm always honored to visit with her, and she's Sandra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is, I have a few remarks, but you know, this is so amazing and so touching. I can't tell you. Counselor Ciomo, Juan, you have, all of you have, have really made our day today. We, on behalf of all of the employees and the associated personnel, of which we now are almost 21,000 at Boston Children's, want to thank all of you for this absolutely amazing recognition. It really is inspiring when people at Boston Children's are recognized for the impact that they have had, not just today, not just for the last 150 years, but hopefully what we'll be able to do in the future. We're so fortunate to have the talent of our, you know, most excellent physicians and researchers and scientists. And I just want to say that, you know, many of these really excellent people could live and go anywhere and work. They could go to almost any state, they could go almost any country that would put the package together for them and where they could lead a program themselves. But they choose to come here to Boston. They choose to come here professionally because of what's here in the Longwood Medical Area. It is probably the greatest concentration of scientists and physicians and nurses and experts in almost every field in medicine, where the collaboration among the institutions, both in the Longwood Medical Area but across the city, within the various universities and colleges, both in the science field but also in where we are really generating the next generation for them to train and for them to create the next round of people who are going to make a difference in the lives of not only children but people in general. And it is also really about living in the city that is such a wonderful and livable city. We attract people professionally, but we attract families because of how wonderful it is to live in Boston and have a lifestyle that really thinks about whole families, about children, about their education, about the social services, about the environment that they live in. And so I just want to thank you for the work that you do to make this the kind of attraction, the attractive environment, the attractive city, the recognition that you have of what we bring, not just to Boston, not just to the Commonwealth, but to the U.S. and truly around the world. We are asked, last year, we saw a child from every single state, in the 50 states, and we saw children from 100 countries. They're coming to Boston because this is viewed as the destination for care, for the treatments, not just the kids in this city, when the others who are caring for them refer them to us at Boston, but they're coming from all over the country and all over the globe. And that really is a tribute, not just to us, but to the environment that you created for us to actually be successful in this community. We have talked, Juan, you mentioned the Boston Centers for Youth and Families to ensure that toddlers get a healthy start, Boston Public Schools to promote both their health and their mental health and behavioral health, well-being. John told me today that we're in over 70 Boston Public Schools, and our goal is to be in all 135, 140...
125.
120. Oh, well, I know it's a big number. We're halfway there, I think. Boston Public Health Commission to make Boston a trauma-sensitive city, and the Mayor's Summer Jobs Program to help quality and really give young people an opportunity to truly understand what a career in the health sciences and in medicine are like. I just want to say, it is our goal, not just to treat children today and the medical care, but also to think about how to really provide an opportunity for them to thrive. They are maybe 20%, 25% of the population today, but I like to say they are 100% of our future. And if we invest in children and we invest in families, we will be not only the great city we are today, but we will be a city that's recognized by the rest of the country and the rest of the world as a place that truly believes in kids and families. So thank you for this acknowledgement. It is an honor to be here today, and I will take back this proclamation, and we will make sure it gets posted on our internet and even more broadly. We have about 700,000 Facebook followers, so we will make sure that this really gets the kind of recognition that you mean it to be. Thank you very much. It is really, truly, an honor.
Please come up for a photo. Great job.
Okay.
That was very nice.
Thank you.
Juan, gonna stand?
Oh, yeah, Juan.
Yeah, Juan. Juan, 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 get up here, please.
I just want to say a shout-out to Juan, as well. Been our advisory board.
He spearheaded this.
In addition to a counselor who heart and soul. All right, one more picture right there.
Thank you for that. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks. Very nice to meet you. Get the papers ready. Thank you.
Thanks, Juan. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna sit down, man. Counselor Flynn? I'm gonna sit down. My foot's killing me.
Get the chair.
Yeah. Thank you. I'd like to now call up two old friends of our council, Mr. Steve Ross and our former colleague, Mike Ross.
Hey, Bobby.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's an honor for me to present two friends, longtime friends of, not only of the city council but of the city of Boston. An official resolution from the Boston City Council to Steve Ross, our dear friend, for your history as a humanitarian and as a founder of the city's Holocaust memorial, dedicated to ensuring that such tragic events never occur again. We thank you for your service to the youth of the city of Boston and for so many years of dedicated service. Steve has a new book that just came out, and I'd just like to read an excerpt of it. It's a quote from Mayor Walsh. "Steve Ross is a quiet leader for our city in the things we care about, helping people overcome obstacles, mentoring youth, providing the power of example. As he did this work, Ross brought people together across all kinds of historic boundaries, neighborhoods, races, religions." On behalf of all of my colleagues on the Boston City Council, we want to say thank you to you, Steve, and to your family for so many dedicated years of helping so many people in Boston, and it's an honor for us to have you with us today.
Let me just say a couple of words if I can. I am speaking on behalf of my dad, who had a stroke a few years back, so his words aren't coming as quickly as they used to. And for many of you who knew Steve Ross, that's a rarity from what you might remember. But he is so happy and inspired to be here. He loves this city. This book meant so much for him that it was able to come out. It was also co-authored with Brian Wallace, who many of you know, and Glenn Frank. And it's been treated well. It's been received by The Washington Post and reviewed by them. It was on The Today Show. For a brief moment, we were number one on Amazon. It's been an amazing ride, and for my dad to see that. This is a tough book to read, and we gave you a copy with my dad's autograph in the book. But it goes back and forth because it's a heavy topic, and it comes back to Boston, to the Boston that many of you know, many of your parents knew, and the Boston my dad worked in. And in many ways, it's a love letter to this city as well. So please read it. Please let us know what you think. And just to the Flins, Father Flynn and the son, they've been unbelievable to my dad's cause. The memorial would not be in this city, wouldn't be the first thing you see when you come to this city, the heart of the city, if it wasn't for former Mayor Flynn. And to see his son now invite us back, it's a really, it's a grand gesture, and we appreciate the opportunity. So thanks on behalf of my dad for having us here today.
Let's take a picture. You go right in the middle here.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Oh, thanks.
She's beautiful, words.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Mark, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
I will.
Yeah, come back.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
Oh, you got a new one?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, but you gotta add something for Flaherty, too, because he put something in there. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, I ask that you please amend the attendance to add Counselor Edwards.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the mayor.
Docket number 1231, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to apply for, accept, and expend federal fiscal year 2018 continuum of care grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $30 million. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing for the homeless.
Docket 1231 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 1232, message in order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to accept and expend an award of $4,920,000 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the FY17 Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program.
Docket 1232 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you read dockets 1234 and 1235 together?
I'd be delighted to. Thank you. Docket number 1234, message in order approving a supplemental appropriation for the property management department for the FY19 in the amount of $26,914 to cover the FY19 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 25. The terms of the contract are July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. The major provisions of the contract include base wages increases of 2% effective the first pay period of October of each fiscal year. The agreements also include other benefits, including a new step beginning in 2018 filed in the office of the city clerk on August 20, 2018. Docket number 1235, message in order to reduce the FY19 appropriation for the reserve of collective bargains by $26,914 to provide funding for the property management department for the FY19 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 25.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I rise to speak on docket number 1234 as well as 1235, the concern of the appropriation for the collective bargaining agreement between property management and the Teamsters Local 25. Docket 1235 transfers the funds from the collecting bargaining reserve, and docket number 1234 authorizes the use of those funds to pay for the contract. This is two consecutive agreements extended from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020. It's an estimated cost of $80,000 over the four years. As vice chair of the Committee of Ways and Means, I request that at this time we suspend the rules and passage for these documents.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy now moves suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1234. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This is a point of clarification to the vice chair, just to make sure I understand. This money is already allocated, and it's literally just a transfer that we're approving? I just want to make sure it's clear. That's it. I don't know if I formatted that correctly or not.
So this is a collective bargaining for property management, six employees.
Okay.
And to suspend and pass their collective bargaining agreement through 2020.
Right. But again, the money's already been put aside.
The $26,000 is in collective bargaining reserve.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Docket 1234 has passed. And now docket 1235. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1235 has passed.
Docket 1236, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $855,000 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Success Link Employment Program awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund summer jobs for 439 youth from July 9 through August 17, 2018.
Thank you. Docket 1236 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Docket 1237.
Docket 1237, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $149,000 in the form of a grant for Double-Up Food Bucks Pilot, awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, passed through the Fair Food Network, to be administered by the Office of Food Access.
of collective bargains by $26,914 to provide funding for the Property Management Department for the FY-19 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 25.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I rise to speak on docket number 1234, as well as 1235. The concern of the appropriation for the collective bargaining agreement between property management and the Teamsters Local 25. Docket 1235 transfers the funds from the Collecting Bargaining Reserve, and docket number 1234 authorizes the use of those funds to pay for the contract. This is two consecutive agreements extended from July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2020. It's an estimated cost of $80,000 over the four years. As Vice Chair of the Committee of Ways and Means, I request that at this time we suspend the rules and passage for these documents.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor McCarthy now moves suspension of the rules and passage of dockets 1234. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This is a point of, this is, excuse me, this is a point of clarification to the Vice Chair, just to make sure I understand. This money is already allocated, and it's literally just a transfer that we're approving? I just want to make sure it's clear. That's it. I don't know if I formatted that correctly or not.
So this is, this is a collective bargaining for property management, six employees.
Okay.
And to suspend and pass their collective bargaining agreement, the success, you know, through 2020.
Right. But again, the money's already been put aside.
The $26,000 is in collective bargaining reserve.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Docket 1234 has passed. And now docket 1235. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1235 has passed.
Docket 1236, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $855,000 in the form of a grant for the FY-19 Success Link Employment Program awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, passed through the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, to be administered by the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment. The grant will fund summer jobs for 439 youth from July 9 through August 17, 2018.
Thank you. Docket 1236 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Docket 1237.
Docket 1237, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $149,000 in the form of a grant for Double Up Food Bucks Pilot, awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, passed through the Fair Food Network, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund some subcontracts for the Mayor's Office of Food Access to stores and farmers' markets in targeted neighborhoods to provide nutrition incentives to SNAP recipients.
Chair recognizes Counselor Presley, Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We certainly all appreciate the role that farmers' markets play in our neighborhoods. This grant will fund subcontracts from the Mayor's Office of Food Access to stores and farmers' markets in targeted neighborhoods to provide nutrition incentives to SNAP benefits. This is a matter of increasing access to fresh and healthy food at an affordable price point, which is critical to not only addressing food insecurity, but also growing health disparities. I move to suspend the rules and to accept this grant today.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Presley, Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension and passage, suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1237. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1237 has been passed.
Docket number 1238, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Boston Marathon Memorial, awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund the planning of the Boston Marathon Memorial.
Chair recognizes, I want to hit your button. Chair recognizes Counselor Janey, Chair of the Committee of Arts, Culture, and Special Events.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise to speak on docket 1238. As already mentioned, this is a $100,000 grant that would fund the planning of the Boston Marathon Memorial, and for that reason, I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1238.
Thank you. Counselor Janey, Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1238. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1238 has been passed.
Docket number 1239, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $33,500 in the form of a grant for the survey and planning awarded by the United States Department of Interior, passed through the Mass Secretary of Commonwealth, of the Commonwealth slash Archives, to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund Phase III of the Roxbury Survey Update and the nomination for the Malcolm X slash Ella Little Collins House in Roxbury to the National Register of Historic Places.
Counselor Wu.
I wasn't following. Which docket are we on? I apologize.
1239.
1239. I was not playing. I would just request a sustained committee. Thank you.
Docket 1239 will be put in the Committee of Planning and Development and Transportation.
Docket number 1240, message in order authorizing the City of Boston, Department of Innovation and Technology, known as DOIT, to enter into a contract with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for a period of up to 30 years for the lease of fiber optic cable connecting 170 city buildings with the city's existing fiber optic network. The contract term of 20 years plus two five-year city renewal options requires the City Council approval pursuant to Section 12 of Chapter 30B of the General Laws.
Docket 1240 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Reports of public officers and others.
Mr. President, would you like me to read dockets 1241 through 1244?
Please.
Thank you. Docket number 1241, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of William Gross as Commissioner of the Boston Police Department, effective August 6, 2018. Docket number 1242, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city from 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday, August 8, 2018, until 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, August 11, 2018. Docket number 1243, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city from 10:22 a.m. on Wednesday, August 15, 2018, until 10:40 p.m. on Thursday, August 16, 2018. Docket number 1244, notice received from the Auditing Department, providing the fiscal year 2019 payroll allotment schedule for all city departments.
Dockets 1241 through 1244 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1245, the Constable Bond of Samuel DeRosa, having been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer, was received and approved under usual terms and conditions.
Docket 1245 will be approved under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1245 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Where's my pack? I think we need a recess for a moment.
Council will be back in session.
Can you call Trish?
We're going to move on to the next dockets. Madam Clerk, could you read docket 1246 through 1268?
I will. I may need oxygen, but I'd be happy to. Docket number 1246, notice received from the Mayor of reappointment of Mark Lee as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a period, for a term expiring January 1, 2020. Docket number 1247, notice received from the Mayor of the reappointment of Sister Margaret Leonard as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 1, 2020. Docket number 1248, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Harry Smith as a member of the Neighborhood Housing Trust for a term expiring January 1, 2020. Docket number 1249, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Daniel Francois as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1, 2020. Docket number 1250, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Jennifer Falk as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1, 2020. Docket number 1251, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Justina Crawford as a member of the Boston Cultural Council for a term expiring October 1, 2020. Docket number 1252, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Olivia Richard as a Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission on Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1253, notice received from the Mayor of Appointment of Juan Ramirez Tapia as Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission, as a Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1254, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Yadi Sanchez as a Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disability Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1255, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Elizabeth Dunclower as the Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1256, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of G. Paul Karen as Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1257, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of Wesley Ireland as a Commissioner of the Mayor's Commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for a term expiring August 1, 2021. Docket number 1258, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Charles Colfield as Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1259, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Deborah Wright as Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1260, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of John Reed as a Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1261, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Jorge Martinez as Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1262, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Mark Fortune as a Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1263, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Travis Watson as a Commissioner of the Boston Employment Commission for a term expiring July 1, 2020. Docket number 1264, notice received from the Mayor of the Appointment of James McNeil as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 1, 2021. Docket number 1265, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Benjamin Stewart as a member of the Living Wage Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 1, 2021. Docket number 1266, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Janine Comerford as a trustee of the Boston Groundwater Trust for a term expiring March 22, 2020. Docket number 1267, notice received from the Mayor of the Reappointment of Mark Pastnik as a member of the Boston Arts Commission for a term expiring April 1, 2023. And docket number 1268, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city from 9:00 a.m. on Monday, August 20, 2018, until 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, August 22, 2018.
Dockets 1246 through 1268 will be placed on file.
Docket number 1269, communication was received from the City Clerk transmitting a communication from the Boston Landmarks Commission for City Council action on the designation of the St. James African Orthodox Church, which is 50 Cedar Street, as a landmark in effect after September 18, 2018, if not acted upon.
Docket 1269 will be placed to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Mr. President, would you like me to read 1270 through 1272?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket number 1270, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Gardner Apartments, Chapter 121A Project Certificate of Project Termination. Docket number 1271, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the First Amendment to the Report and Decision on the 252 slash 258 Huntington Ave, Chapter 121A Project. And docket number 1272, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Fourth Amendment to the Report and Decision on the Fieldstone Apartments, Chapter 121A Project.
Dockets 1270 through 1272 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0263, order for hearing to consider benefits of net zero carbon requirements and incentives for future construction in the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor O'Malley, Chair of the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we speak, there's currently a Category 5 hurricane that will be hitting the United States the next couple of days in Hawaii. It is, I believe, the second Cat 5 that's ever been in that region of the Pacific. I bring that up to say that you cannot refute the fact that man-made climate change has been a, has resulted in some of these weather events, and obviously, an island like Hawaii is going to be susceptible, the Caribbean we've seen, as well as the coast, the south coast, and as a coastal city, Boston is seeing it. This is something that we can no longer say that we need to act because of our kids and our grandkids. This is happening now. Now, one thing that I have been incredibly proud to have worked with all of you on in my time on this body is putting initiatives forward that are going to address our greenhouse gas emissions, going to build a better city and a greener city in the face of the fact that we have an administration in Washington, D.C. that has been not only hostile, but outright detrimental to the gains that we've made. So it's up to cities to really lead on climate. A great way we can do that is look at what's more than 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions, which is building. This is the preamble to say, I'm delighted that yesterday was our third working session on our efforts to establish a net zero carbon building incentives going forward. This is something that I believe you've all played a role in, you've all been supportive of. Special thanks yesterday for Counselors Edwards, Flynn, and Presley for participating, as well as every staff that was represented across, across the body. And this has been a really, really robust process. We initially had a hearing. We then had three working sessions. We convened a group of experts in the private sector, in the public sector, environmentalists, academics, and it's been really, really worthwhile. Now, I, it is likely that yesterday will be our last working session on that, and the next step will be, we're going to collect all the data, we're going to collect all the information that we've been working on, and I wanted to especially thank Jessica Mars from my team, who's been the quarterback in our office on this effort. And we're going to come out with a series of proposals, really starting in, in this fall. You know, it, this isn't sort of, is, this is a very wonky proposal. Perhaps that's why I'm drawn to DOIT. It's not as though it's the plastic bag ordinance where we sort of know what the outcome is, and then we work towards that. There's no real net zero carbon ordinance, per se. It's going to be a whole host of issues, and what we're trying to focus on now are the benefits, are the positives, to use a carrot approach going forward. So some of these will indeed be changes to the zoning code that we'll propose. Others will be resolutions that this body can put forward. There's a whole host of really, really interesting, innovative ideas that are going to directly result in Boston, in the midst of this building boom, building better, more sustainable, more green buildings going forward. We can also use some of the tools that we've led on as it relates to reporting and disclosures, such as BERTO, the Boston Energy Reporting and Disclosure Ordinance that this body passed along with former Mayor Menino back in 2012. So again, this will like, yesterday was likely the last working session we will have. We're going to work with, with Ron Cobb, our liaison, as well as other great allies and central staff, and coming up with a really robust committee report. We're going to use that as our blueprint going forward with putting together some really interesting initiatives. I'm really excited about this. You know, I know sometimes I get all worked up over initiatives like this, but I think this is one that we can really make a profound interest, that other cities will follow suit. There, we've also There, we've also, and I want to thank Counsel Presley for bringing this point up, is a real important intersectionality between environmental drive and economic justice drive, and the two aren't in conflict. In fact, more often than not, there's ways to really focus on both. So that's what we're going to be doing. Thank you again for all of your work to get to this point. Looking forward to rolling out some great proposals this fall and then again in the, in the new calendar year. And it's a really exciting and a really important issue that this body can once again lead on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Docket 0263 will remain in the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks. Madam Clerk, can we revisit docket 1245?
Docket number 1245, the Constable Bond of Samuel Droger, having been duly approved by the Collective Treasurer, was received and approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Docket 1245 will be approved under the usual terms and, and conditions. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1245 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1273, Counselors Flynn and Flaherty offer the following order for hearing regarding the South Boston Seaport waterfront and the South Boston Seaport Transit Strategic Plan.
Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to thank my good friend, Counsel Flaherty, for his leadership on this issue. I'll be brief. I'm confident that Counsel Flaherty will provide more of the details as well. We're all aware of the tremendous commercial and residential growth on the South Boston waterfront in the last couple of decades. Being there today in no way resembles its appearance even five or 10 years ago. We're thankful for growth in our city, but with this substantial development comes additional vehicles and congestion. More importantly, this presents public safety issues for our pedestrians, motorists, and cyclists. We have had a number of crashes in my district this year, some close calls and a tragedy that our entire community continues to mourn. Counsel Flaherty and I are calling for a hearing on the South Boston waterfront and Seaport, Seaport Strategic Plan because we are committed to Vision Zero. We're looking to have a conversation about where things stand currently and what plans are in terms of the community process. We firmly believe that residents should have a voice in what takes place and enable it. Moreover, we seek to find out what the timeline will look like for this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. To echo Counsel Flynn, recently, there's been two community meetings, one hosted by the elected leaders as well as city officials, and the other hosted by community advocates, both with the same intentions and the goals around traffic safety, in awareness, in recent, in light of the recent tragedies in the neighborhood. At these meetings, our neighbors voiced the same concerns that they have been persistently mobilizing around for years, which is necessary traffic improvements and greater community input in these improvements, including visible crosswalks, stop signs, streetlights, raised crosswalks, visible intersections, slower speeds, more traffic enforcement. The BPDA recently authorized $400,000 as part of a request for proposals for consultant services for the South Boston Seaport Transit Strategic Plan. The BPDA voted on that proposal, and that work was slated to begin the summer of 2018, meaning that it's supposed to be underway. And so Counsel Flynn and I are looking for an update on that, and it's supposed to be completed within nine months timeframe. So as the summer winds down, Counsel Flynn and I would like to have a hearing, ask our colleagues to join us to get the current status of that South Boston Seaport Transportation Strategic Plan, find out what the expected project timelines are, as well as opportunities for community input. If the two counselors that, from that neighborhood don't know about it, then I'd venture to say that the people in the neighborhood who are most adversely impacted with that cut-through traffic and all of that unprecedented, both commercial and residential development down along the waterfront, but we really need a, a district-wide transportation solution to this problem. So looking forward to bringing them in, getting an update on the, on the, on the consultant, get an update on the plan, and let's get some community input, and let's get some real results for, for the neighbors that are dealing with these traffic impacts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to thank Counselors Flynn and Flaherty for this. I'd like to sign on, but I asked respectfully for Counsel Flynn and Counsel Flaherty to possibly include the topic of concurrent jurisdiction. As we talk about Boston Transportation Department, Boston Police, and state troopers and Mass Port as well, you know, we have a couple working as a team and a couple working as silos, and no transportation plan is going to work unless we're all in the same squad. So I'd just like to respectfully ask that they add that as well.
Thank you. Please add Counselor McCarthy's name. Docket 127, oh, I'm sorry. Please add Counselor Baker's name, Counselor Wu, Counselor Presley, Counselor Zachem, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Janey, and the chair, please. Docket 1273 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, personnel orders.
Docket number 1274, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1274. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1274 has been passed.
Docket number 1275, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Janey.
Counsel Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1275. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1275 has been passed.
Docket number 1276, Counsel Campbell for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1276. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1276 has been passed.
Docket number 1277, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Flaherty.
Counsel Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1277. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1277 has been passed.
Docket number 1279, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Zachem.
Counsel Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1278. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1278 has been passed.
Docket number 1279, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Zachem.
Counsel Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1279. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1279 has been passed.
Docket number 1280, Counsel Campbell for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1280. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1280 has been passed. Madam Clerk, it looks like I have three late files in the hands of the clerk, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added to the agenda. The current clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. August 22nd, 2018, Dear Madam Clerk, I formally address you to inform you that I will not be able to attend today's council meeting. Respectfully, Andrea J. Campbell, Boston City Council President, District 4.
Placed on file.
The second late file is offered by Counselors Ed Flynn and Counsel Frank Baker. Order for hearing on Boston speed limits and pedestrian safety. Whereas the city of Boston reduced its default speed limit, unless otherwise posted, to 25 miles per hour on January 9th, 2017, and the increase of both commuters and ride-sharing company vehicles contribute to more cars cutting through our neighborhoods that may be unfamiliar with their surroundings and sometimes speeding to a destination and not always showing consideration for residents. Therefore, be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss the lowering of speed limit to 20 miles per hour and ways in which we can provide better traffic calming throughout the city of Boston. Representatives from the city of Boston and other interested parties shall be invited to attend. Filed in council on August 22nd, 2018.
Chair recognizes Counselor Ed Flynn.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to Counsel Baker for your leadership on what I believe to be the top issue in my district and one of the most important in our city, safety for all on our roads for pedestrians, motorists, cyclists, Vision Zero, no fatal or serious crashes in Boston. I'd also like to thank Mayor Walsh for his leadership in moving our city forward, Vision Zero for various traffic calming measures, one of which was lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour last January. Despite this significant progress, hardly a day goes by when my friends, neighbors, constituents, even my elderly parents, often walking my special needs nephew, that they don't tell me about speeding vehicles and close calls in a crosswalk. We have more vehicles, more commuters, and more ride sharers sharing vehicles cutting through our neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we experience these and worse, tragic crashes in the city of Boston. Most recently, a beautiful young boy, Colin McGrath, was tragically taken from us following a crash on L. and E. 6th Street in South Boston last month. His sister was also injured there as well. The entire community continues to grieve their loss, and we pray for the McGrath family. Our community has become mobilized around this critical issue. Neighbors like Katie Donovan, who was struck on Farragut Road in the spring. She's becoming a champion for pedestrian safety in our neighborhood. Katie and the people of South Boston have strongly advocated for changes that our city and state transportation agencies are currently enacting, such as a road diet being constructed on Day Boulevard for one lane of traffic to help encourage slower speeds and deter cut-through traffic. The city continues to make progress on this issue, but it is my position that 25 miles per hour is still too fast for our streets. On many of them, I just don't believe one could stop in time, traveling at that speed, if a pedestrian suddenly emerged from behind a car. I recently offered a 12-point plan for safer streets in South Boston, including traffic calming measures like speed humps, raised crosswalks, road diets, speed boards, curb extensions to narrow the road, blinking pedestrian crossing signs like we have on Summer Street in a great, in a greater enforcement. I also called for a 20 mile per hour speed limit throughout South, South Boston. I was pleased that Commissioner Fian Daca and the Transportation Department announced at a, at a community meeting that they will include many of these, as well as the 20 mile per hour zone as part of their South Boston Action Plan. I'd also like to thank the mayor, Congressman Lynch, Counsel Flaherty, Clerk Donovan, Senator Collins, many others that have taken part in, in this issue. Many of our at-large colleagues were also there, including Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Wu, and, and Counsel Presley as well. Again, I want to say thank you to Counsel Baker, and I am calling for this hearing as we, as we would like to start a dialogue around the merits of a 20 mile per hour speed limit in Boston, unless otherwise posted. Data from the city's website and the AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety indicated that at 30 miles per hour, the likelihood of a fatality or serious injury was 50%, while if a cow is traveling 20 miles per hour, that number drops significantly to 18%. I think this conversation will have merit as we all try to do our part to realize Vision Zero. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for allowing me to sign on to this with you. One of my top constituent complaints is the need to lower speed limits, more enforcement in various traffic calming measures like raised crosswalks, speed humps, narrowing traffic lanes, bump, bump outs and planters. As elected officials in the city of Boston, we need to help eliminate traffic fatalities on our streets. Lowering the street speed limit is an important step in the right direction. We were already successful in lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on public ways subject to the control of the city. Our city should be able to establish municipally designated zones determined by the Commissioner of Transportation and allow us to lower the speed limit in heavily trafficked areas like near senior centers, MBTA stations, and business districts. Helping to reduce the overall speed of vehicles, increase public safety and improve the quality of, and helping to reduce the overall speed of vehicles, increase public safety and improve the quality of life for the residents of Boston. And again, thank you, Counsel Flynn, for allowing me to sign on to this. We went to the state with this once and got it from 30 to 25. I think it's appropriate to, to see if we can bring it down again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Counsel Flaherty.
Please add my name, Mr. President.
Please add Counsel Flaherty's name, Counsel Zachem, Counsel Wu, Counsel Presley, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Janey, and the chair, please. Madam Clerk, the third late file matter? And that late file matter will be placed in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Third late file, offered by Counsel Zionah Presley, Lydia Edwards, and Josh Zachem. Order for hearing to explore requiring landlords to provide voter registration information to all new tenants. Whereas the city of Boston is committed to increasing the percentage of residents who participate in our elections and should be considering innovative ways to reach everyone. Whereas the Elections Department requires Boston residents changing addresses or people moving into the city from another municipality to update their registration to remain an eligible voter, now therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to explore the possibilities of requiring landlords in the city of Boston to provide voter registration information to new tenants when they sign a lease. The Elections Department and Housing Department and other interested parties be invited to testify filed on August 22nd, 2018.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Before I begin, I just wanted to ask if we could suspend Rule 12. I'd like to add our, as an original, our, a third co-sponsor.
Sure. Seeing and hearing no objections, Rule 12 has been suspended.
Okay.
Please add Counselor Zachem's name.
Yes. I want to thank my colleagues, respectively, the Chair of the Housing Committee and the Civil Rights Committee for signing on to this order, and I thank all of you for your indulgence of a late file. You know, I recall when I was first starting to attend a neighborhood and civic group meetings, and we would have a discussion about development, and the assumption always was that those that were greater invested in community and that had a greater stakeholder in community were homeowners. That was a synonymous statement, stakeholders and homeowners. Unfortunately, for a confluence of many reasons, the opportunity for people to own homes is becoming farther and farther out of grasp for most. And in the city of Boston, 64% of Bostonians are renters. Now, in this body, we've done a lot of work collectively to prevent displacement, around tenant protections, to make sure that housing is affordable, clean, and safe. There are federal initiatives to provide relief for renters. And now, I think it's time that we look at innovative ways to more civically engage and to promote voter participation for renters, including and especially younger people and newer residents to the city of Boston. The ordinance that I'm putting forward for a hearing, this has already been done in other municipalities. It's been done in Seattle, Washington, St. Paul, Minnesota, and think it is an innovative strategy that we should be considering here. Now, our Elections Department, we owe a debt of gratitude to them. They are dedicated and hardworking and doing what they can with the resources that they have, but we need reinforcements. So this ordinance would require landlords to provide their tenants with voter registration forms. So I look forward to a hearing. Again, I thank my co-sponsors for signing on to this, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Lose my voice.
Chair recognizes Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note, I'm very, very supportive of this initiative, in part because I do think that landlords and tenants have regular contact that oftentimes tenants may not have with city governments or agencies, may not regularly be going to libraries, and other innovative ways in which we have supported outreach to voters. I think that also that this is not as burdensome attempt to also reach out to tenants in that we already have them sign leases on an annual basis. This is really a matter of providing information, which could be as simple as a paragraph within the lease saying, if this is your new home, please don't forget to register online at such and such, or they could provide the form with the lease as the person is signing. This is something that actually, I think, invites us to work together to make our community more civically engaged, and I think I look forward to hearing from landlords, I am one myself, about how this cannot be so burdensome for them, but also helps for them to engage in a more maybe positive way with their tenants beyond just collecting rent or talking about issues that they have. I think this is an exciting way in which we can encourage people to connect with each other, and I think it's a way in which we also need to assure that we're reaching out as many ways as possible to get people to vote and at least be registered to do so.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselors Edwards and Pressley, for joining in this effort. I think it's a very important step forward for the city of Boston. I'm proud of the work this body did to provide opportunities for people to register to vote during routine interactions with our city agencies, and this is just another step we can take, looking at what our authority is over requiring landlords to provide this information. I know many of the landlords in the Mission Hill neighborhood and some in the Fenway neighborhood that I currently represent do this as a matter of course, and I think that's wonderful, but we need to be talking about ways we can expand this, whether it's on a voluntary basis or mandating it for folks who have new tenants signing new leases. Important step forward for civic engagement. I look forward to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to really commend the three makers for this. It's a common sense yet profoundly impactful idea. I can tell you, I remember vividly the first apartment I lived in in Washington, D.C. as an undergraduate in college was given a whole folder of information, tenants' rights, important contact information, emergency contact numbers, and a voter registration form. I, of course, would not advocate my Boston voting status, so I didn't fill it out because I remained an absentee voter here, but it was a great way to bring people into the process, and I think that this is a very important idea, one that obviously we should do and we should explore. I'd also ask, and we'll ask this at the hearing, this was something I asked at Counselor Zachem's earlier efforts to make it easier and to eventually get to some sort of automatic voting system, which I wholeheartedly support. I wonder what the cost would be to mail every residence in Boston a voter registration form. I think that's something that we ought to consider as well. I think that there are ways you could shrink the universe by checking against already registered ones, but I think that there are certain things that we can do, and as we see it, is so much more important, more now than ever perhaps, to make sure that we have an engaged and informed and really active electorate. So thank you again to the three co-sponsors, and I ask that my name be added.
Please add Counselor O'Malley's name. Counselor Wu. Counselor Janey. Thank you. Anybody, oh, and I'm sorry, that late file, the third late file, will be placed on the Committee on Civil Rights. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to pull a matter from the green sheets? Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I actually have two dockets, which I would love to speak on together. It'll save time if possible, so these are dockets number 0808 on page 8 of 13, and docket 0, sorry, 1024 on page 9 of 13.
Actually, no, page 8. Thank you. I'll read that into the record.
Please.
Thank you. Docket number, in the Committee on Planning and Development and Transportation, docket number 0808, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order for your approval to authorize the sale of certain portions of public ways known as 90 Cottage Street, East Boston, as shown on the plan of land entitled City of Boston Public Works Department Engineering Division Discontinuance Plan. Vertical 90 Cottage Street, East Boston, dated November 21, 2017, specifically containing about 16.9 square feet and 533 cubic feet. The discontinued parcel. This was referred to committee on May 23, 2018, received its first reading on August 1, 2018, and was assigned for further action. Docket number, this on the revised is page 8 of 13. In the Committee on Planning and Development and Transportation, docket number 1024, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order authorizing the sale of certain portion of public way known as Everett Street, Alston, as shown on a plan of land entitled City of Boston Public Works Department Engineering Division Discontinuance Plan. Everett Street, Alston, dated March 22, 2018, specifically containing about 4,417 square feet. The discontinued parcel was referred to committee on June 27, 2018, and received its first reading on August 1, 2018, and was assigned for further action.
Chair recognizes Counselor Wu.
Thank you very much. So as mentioned, we had taken the first votes on both of these matters last meeting. They, the first falls in Counselor Edwards' district and the second in the chair's district. The East Boston parcel is, or the East Boston air rights issue is a vertical discontinuance because of balconies overhanging the sidewalk. In case you were wondering what the going rate for about two feet of air rights over sidewalk is, it's $6,000 that that project developer will pay for those rights as assessed. And the second docket, again, a stub of a street ending, leading to the tracks that is not used as street and will be intended to be used as open space, assessed at $54,000. Again, already took the first vote, requesting the second one today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Quick recess. Call the roll, right? Back in session. Clerk, will you please call the roll? On docket 0808.
Docket 0808. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George. Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Pressley.
Yes.
Counsel Pressley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. The, I thought someone was coming in. It has passed with 10 votes in the affirmative and no objections.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please call the roll for docket 1024?
Docket 1024. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Pressley.
Yes.
Counsel Pressley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Mr. President, docket number 1024 received 10 votes and none in opposition.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise to pull from the green sheets, docket 1075, page 4 of 13.
If I may, in the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 1075, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order for your approval and ordinance amending the city of Boston code ordinance, Chapter 24, Boston Jobs and Living Wage Ordinance, filed in committee on July 11, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. The matter was filed by the mayor. I've heard from proponents of the ordinance, particularly our friends and members of SEIU 32BJ, they've put a ton of time and effort into working with the mayor's office on coming up with this proposal. However, due to scheduling conflicts, we were not able to hold a hearing on the matter, which would automatically go into effect, so I'm asking that we reject without prejudice, give the mayor an opportunity to refile, and we'll have an expedited hearing within the next couple of weeks and get this thing back before this party for appropriate vote.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? The chair recommends rejection without prejudice of docket 1075. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it. 1075 has been rejected without prejudice. Chair recognizes Counselor Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to pull docket number 1154 from page 5 of 13. Sorry. Could you hear that?
I can. Thank you, Counsel. In the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, docket number 1154, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $80,000 in the form of a grant for the Early Childhood Innovation awarded by the Pittman Foundation to be administered by the mayor's office. The grant will fund the Early Educator Space Project, which will retain and expand the supply of childcare homes filed in the council, referred to committee on August 1, 2018.
He needs to pull matters from the [inaudible]. Quick recess, please. The Mass School Building, right? Session. Counselor Pressley moves suspension and passage of docket 1154. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
I hadn't read them. But that's, I don't need to speak on it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Since no one can hear you, I kind of took that. The ayes have it. Docket 1154 is passed. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to pull docket's number 1076 or 1077.
I can't see past that.
Page 12 of 13 and 13 of 13.
Thank you. In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 1076, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order approving an appropriation of $5,429,304 for the purpose of paying for the costs associated with window replacement projects at the John Marshall Elementary School, known as Up Academy. This includes the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. This matter was referred to committee on July 11, 2018. A hearing was held on July 30, 2018, and this docket received its first reading on August 1 and was assigned for further action. In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 1077, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order approving an appropriation of $600,000 for the purpose of paying for the cost of a feasibility study and schematic design work associated with projects at the following schools. The Rafael Hernandez School Boiler Replacement, Patrick Leiden School Boiler Replacement, Donald McKay K-8 School Boiler Replacement, James Otis School Window Replacement, Josiah Quincy Elementary School Boiler Replacement, Snowden International School La Copley Roof Replacement, and the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science Window Replacement. This includes the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA, said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of Boston Public Schools.
Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Docket number 1076 or 1077 are a little over $6 million directly going to the Boston Public School Buildings, and I'd like to have this suspended and passed today. Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy moves for the second vote on docket 1076. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I will. Docket 1076. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Pressley.
Yes.
Counsel Pressley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Mr. President, the docket number 1076 has received 10 votes in the affirmative and no votes in opposition.
Thank you. Docket 1076 has passed. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for docket 1077?
Docket 1077. Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabby George. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Pressley.
Yes.
Counsel Pressley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem.
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. Oops, I'm...
76, 77, it's 11.
I'm sorry. I'd like to correct the record. Docket 1076 and 1077 have received 11 votes in the affirmative and no votes in opposition. So if I could amend 1076.
Very good.
I can't count.
Okay. Docket 1077. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry? Brief recess. I need, I need pain medication. Back in session. There are four late file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are added. Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for reconsideration of, I believe it was, dockets 0818 and 0828 on the green sheets?
Mm-hmm.
And 1024, excuse me, on the green sheets to have my vote recorded in the affirmative on both dockets.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor Edwards.
I'd like to move for reconsideration. I apologize, I think I meant to have, or I meant to have my name added to the, in support of the slow streets or the hearing on the speed limits.
Yes.
So, I didn't raise my hand and I wanted to make sure it was added.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any announcements? Yep. Counsel Baker.
Permission to make a brief statement?
Regarding?
Oh, my mom.
Of course.
I just want to let people know tomorrow is my mother's second year anniversary, and seeing Steve Ross here today, we're all products of our parents. I'm only standing here because of my mother and father and the work that they did, and people knew me through my parents. So, just to honor my mother, Eileen O'Connor, tomorrow is her second year anniversary. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Baker. Anyone else wishing, seeing and hearing none? I'd now like to ask members and guests to please rise. We will now adjourn today in meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Baker, Michael F. Curley, Chris O'Brien. For myself, Jennifer Lynn Toler, U. Gallagher, Patrick Caneely. For Counselor Edwards, James M. Knott, father of Janet Knott. Counselor Flaherty, William T. Roach. For Counselor Flaherty, Flynn, Mary Maddox, Congressman Lynch's aunt. For Counselor Janey, Cecil Guskot, Dominic Caristi. And for all counselors, the Queen of Soul, Aretha Franklin. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals, and it is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, September 12, at 12:00 noon, in the Ionella Chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.